All right, welcome to the Newport Beach City Council Meeting of July 28, 2020, for the closed session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Muldoon is currently absent, but he will be here.
All right, do we have any public comments on our closed session? We'll start with the community room.
O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher speaking from the community room. Regarding the closed session, item A is announced that the city attorney wants to meet with you to discuss suing some undisclosed person or entity. As always, I would ask you to ask yourselves, how does it benefit your constituents that they do not know who you might be considering suing? And how does it benefit you to not get an input from those constituents as to the wisdom of doing it? Item B is a discussion of the price and terms of payment that you would be willing to accept to either buy or lease a property that the city of Costa Mesa is developing as a homeless shelter. I would remind you that the discussion is limited strictly to the price and how the price would be paid. I would observe that while your notice says that you are negotiating with the city of Costa Mesa, the city of Costa Mesa recent agendas say that they are negotiating with the Central Orange County Service Planning Area Group, which makes me wonder if what you're discussing is actually a real estate transaction between you and Costa Mesa or some other kind of contractual relationship that would not be eligible for closed session. I would also like to note the tie-in between this item and an item you have on the evening agenda, which is an extension of a development agreement with Hoag Hospital. Under that agreement, Hoag is offering, or was offering, $300,000 a year for the city to operate a homeless shelter. You might be asking yourselves whether that offer from Hoag would apply to this deal if you made it. Again, that is not a topic for the closed session, but it's something I think you would need to know or discuss before getting into it. And then finally, I would just like to observe that perhaps this, in the near future, would be a very good time for the city to publicly get a and the remainder of the council to get an update on the status of the city's overall homeless program. That has kind of gone essentially dark. It's mentioned in the city manager's weekly newsletter, on occasion parts of it, but the big picture has kind of gone dark since the homeless task force, a public group, turned into a three-member privately-meeting city council ad hoc committee. And so I think it would be timely for the public in general to know how that is going and also to understand the wisdom of participating in this deal with Costa Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you. Any calls? No. All right, Mr. Harp.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. The city council will adjourn a closed session to discuss items 3A and B on the agenda, including whether to initiate litigation regarding one matter and to provide direction regarding price and terms of payment to the city manager, community development director, and real property administrator, or the city's real property negotiators as to the property located at 3175 Airway Avenue in the city of Costa Mesa, which is owned by the city of Costa Mesa. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will stand recessed until 5 o'clock. Thank you. All right, welcome back to the regular session of the July 28, 2020 city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. There is no closed session report this evening.
And then do we have Dr. Terrell with us to, for the invocation? No? Okay, then I'll go ahead and do the invocation. And Mr. Avery, would you mind doing the pledge of allegiance? All right, please stand.
Lord, thank you for this gathering. Thank you for the ability to make decisions that affect our community. Thank you for letting us live in a country, in a state, in a county, in a city that allows for this kind of representative democracy. We ask that you watch over us, give us guidance, wisdom, and patience. We ask that you watch over our men and women and our public safety and our police and fire and lifeguards. We ask that you watch over our first responders and hospitals, Lord. We ask that you watch over those people who are sick. Please get them better. We ask that you watch over those people who are healthy. Please keep them that way. In these things, we ask in thy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we get to do a very special presentation, which is a recognition of our seasonal lifeguard Sean Richards for his heroic rescues on July 3, 2020. Sean, why don't you come on up to the mic for me? So what we're going to do is, I'm going to read the proclamation. Then I'm guessing I'll have a few council members who would like to say nice things about you. And also, we'll give you the opportunity to say a few nice words, especially about family and friends who are here today. So I'm going to read through the proclamation, which this is what it is. Whereas Sean Richards was hired as a Newport Beach seasonal lifeguard in 2014, and whereas Sean developed his lifeguarding skills by participating in the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard Program and while serving for the Huntington Beach Junior Lifeguard Program as a safety aide, and whereas Sean's strong lifeguarding and waterman abilities moved his tower rotation from the West Newport and Balboa Divisions to the most challenging towers in Newport Beach, which include the Wedge and Tower 18, and whereas on July 3, 2020, at 4:00 PM, Sean was stationed at Newport Beach's Tower A when he recognized swimmers struggling in the shore break, and whereas Sean's keen lifeguarding skills set him into action and he entered the water to perform a rescue, and whereas upon successfully rescuing and returning the first swimmer to shore, he noticed the other victim being swept toward the Balboa Pier, and whereas without hesitation, Sean re-entered the surf line and reached the swimmer south of the pier, and whereas Sean held onto the victim as they were both swept through the pier pilings, buffeted by eight-foot breaking waves, and he protected the victim from being tossed against the pilings with violent force, and whereas after clearing the pier, Sean safely delivered the victim to shore where other lifeguards were ready to assist, and whereas after being completely exhausted from making the back-to-back rescues in harrowing conditions, Sean collapsed on the sand, and whereas Newport Beach lifeguard and fire personnel cared for and transported Sean to Hoag Hospital where he stated, "I'm just glad those kids are all right." Now therefore, I, Mayor Will O'Neill, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Newport Beach seasonal lifeguard Sean Richards. Skillful and courageous actions performed during hazardous ocean conditions saved two lives on July 3, 2020. Congratulations, Sean. So I just want to tell you, so on July 3, I got a call from our fire chief, and the first thing he said was, "We've got a, we're transporting a lifeguard to the hospital." And I can tell you that as a mayor, short of being your parent, I can tell you that is one of the scariest calls I've received this year. And then he explained he's going to be okay, and let me tell you about the rescues he just made. And I couldn't be more proud of you. I really couldn't. This is a staggering accomplishment that you went out and you saved people. And that's what you signed up to do, but in the moment, you were able to actually take all the training that you've learned, and you've done something that you should be proud of for the rest of your life. And I just want to tell you, I'm, I just, I can't even begin to express my appreciation for everything that you've done, the way that you've represented our city, and will continue to do so. And I was, I had a lot of text messages from our fire chief, so I just want to say to our fire chief, thank you for keeping me updated. But yeah, I was checking on, a lot of people were checking in on you actually throughout the day, but really couldn't be more proud of you. So congratulations. I'm going to kick it over to a couple of council members who would like to say a few words also. First, our mayor pro tem, Brad Avery.
In my view, there can be no greater honor than saving a life.
Sorry, Brad. Mike.
So just, I just, behalf of the city, I just want to say thank you so much. And I know all of your fellow lifeguards would have done the same thing, but you were there and acted heroically. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon.
And of course, to echo the praise that we bestow upon you, I don't know if you have family members here that can share in your pride. We're very honored to be able to salute you. I'd asked the fire chief to give me the recent data on the number of people that populate our beaches this summer, and many people may not, who are listening, may not realize it. All of you lifeguards realize it. But last Friday, we had 57,000, almost 58,000 people. Saturday, 77,000, and Sunday, 75,000 people on our beaches. That we are putting the population of Orange County on our beaches, and they are protected by the best and the finest in lifesaving personnel, lifeguards that we, that the state could find. And we are so honored for what you do. I'm married to a former lifeguard, so I'm very proud. I'm very proud of lifeguards. You are hardworking, dedicated public servants, and we are grateful for you, and you are a hero. Thank you very much.
Ms. Brenner.
I am the mother of a junior lifeguard and the grandmother of junior lifeguards, and I just want to say thank you for them, for being such a wonderful role model and example for them to follow. And I think just for the city of Newport Beach, we are all so proud of you. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Sean, obviously, for your bravery. Did you get a cramp at all during the process? And in all seriousness, I know you're a humble guy. I could tell by your posture. But would you want to tell us a short version of what it was like? Or is that something you want to say for another day? I don't want to put you on the spot. Okay, I totally understand. You're not a very good politician, because you would take that opportunity, you would run with it if you were. The two victims, obviously, are indebted to you. Hope you have drinks for life. The city's indebted to you because you're a testament to what we do from the top down. And obviously, you have a chance to climb the ranks and teach that to people younger than you, but you represent more than just yourself. Represent the chiefs and the colleagues you work with at the city, and not just people in your own department, but all those who are proud to have the city seal on the vehicles and their uniforms. So thank you so much.
I'm going to call on the next council member in just a second. Simone, would you mind turning his mic on? Sorry, I probably should have done that before. Mr. Hurdman.
Sean, I don't want to be repetitive, so I'm not going to be. Just thank you. And also, a huge thanks to not only you, but the entire department for your perseverance under the current conditions that we're living under with this pandemic, and the inordinate amount of people you have had to watch out for on our beaches as a result of it, it being the only form of entertainment really that people have during this virus. So just commendations on not only an outstanding job in terms of these two, but overall through this entire pandemic. I thank you.
And then finally, Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, Sean, you know, you have to do things in all conditions. You can't just go out when it's glassy and rescue somebody. You have to go whenever you're called. That part of it is really amazing to me. But I can see the length of your shoe there. It's almost as though you've got built-in fins. So I think it's, you are born for this work, and you did a great job, and thank you so much.
Awesome. Sean, you're welcome to say anything or nothing.
I'm okay.
Well, I just want to say then, on behalf of the entire city of Newport Beach, and frankly, everyone who visits our beaches, thank you. Thank you for stepping up that day and being who you are. So I'm going to come down, present this proclamation to you, and then you can go celebrate with your family and friends. So I'm going to come on down. All right, Madam Clerk.
The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right, now is the time for city council announcements and oral reports from city council on committee activities. We'll move from my left to my right. So we'll start with Mr. Duffield.
I have none.
Ms. Brenner.
Yes, I wanted to report that our homeless ad hoc committee did meet, and we've got a really active group of people that come and meet with us that are experts in the field. And our new homeless liaison officer, Cynthia Carter, from the police department, is doing an excellent job. And Natalie Basmagian really seems to have gotten her wings and knows what she's doing, and they're working with CityNet, and they're having some real, really big successes. If anyone has not subscribed to Grace Leong's newsletter, you should be, because she highlighted in there some of the successes that we've had in this area, and the project room key that is funded by the state is really helping out right now and helping us to get people into housing and temporary housing and services, and some are even being reunited with their families. So there's something positive that's coming out of all of this. And also, I've been meeting with some CDMRA, Current of our Residents Association subcommittees. There's a subcommittee on resident parking program that Grace set up a meeting with all the appropriate people here at the city, and we did a Zoom meeting, and they've got a plan in place that they are looking at and to see if there's any possibility of being successful there. We've also got another subcommittee that's looking at one-way streets in CDM Village, and they're very active. And then we've got some groups that are really looking at construction parking and our weekend construction ban. So we're going out to meet with those people, and I actually had an experience this weekend where I had a new patio put in, and the contractor wanted to come back and finish up on Saturday morning. I thought he was doing the quiet work, and when he started sawing the concrete outside of the kitchen window, I had to go out and stop him and say, "Oh, no, 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 you're not allowed to make noise in Newport Beach on Saturdays and Sundays." And so it's still not done. I hope he comes back to finish it someday. But anyway, and then at the same time, I was having complaints from people over at Goldenrod and Seaview that there was construction noise going on there. So the process didn't work seamlessly, but we're looking at what didn't work and how to make sure it works in the future.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Couple of Zoom meetings, which is typical of our meetings recently. So we reconvene the Peninsula Stakeholders Meeting. Community Development has kept that up for the entire time I've been on the city council, where we bring together the restaurant and bar owners, residents, and the police and community development staff, just to meet together twice a year before the summer and after the summer to just see what's going on. Because of COVID, a lot of issues and the emergency provisions of the ordinance that community development is implementing, it was really the largest part of the conversation of how restaurants are operating, how some of them may not be doing proper social distancing and mask wearing. So the police working with all of us to give us a report on incidents that are taking place in the peninsula. The largest one of note really is fireworks, illegal fireworks continuing to go off, and alcohol being removed from the restaurant and going out to the streets and the beaches. It's a continuing challenge, and our police department is on that. But overall, a good meeting, good communication, and sharing information back and forth. We're just pleased that our restaurants and small businesses can operate to some ability, some level of operation if they're permitted to. And our emergency ordinance to permit use of public spaces is really going well. I think they're over, what, 70? Simone, I can't see Simone because of the sun. It's about 70 special permits that have been granted under his direction, so that's very positive. Also, you'll be here, we'll be discussing at the end of the evening tonight, the recommendations of the aviation committee. But leading up to tonight, I'm vice chair, serving with councilmember Hurdman, and I was part of the subcommittee that is making the recommendations last night to the aviation committee. So some good discussion has taken place, but a lot of good activity by the aviation subcommittee members on the RFP process, review process, and then to the aviation committee. It's a very active committee, and I'm delighted to be a part of it. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon. Mr. Hurdman.
Yes, I have a few things to announce. I did attend the monthly vector control trustee meeting. These meetings I'm attending are all done by Zoom. We do have an infestation of mosquitoes in our city in the Big Canyon Reservoir Nature Reserve area, and I just want citizens in the city to know that it is being treated by vector control in an effort to get the infestation under control, which they feel that they're going to be able to do without any problem. We had our first in a series of four task force meetings with the FAA this last week. It was a Zoom meeting. All cities in Republican Ruta's district were represented by and elected. The FAA was in attendance. Representative Ruta was in attendance. His staff was in attendance. The meeting lasted about an hour. The purpose of the meeting was to basically set the ground rules for future meetings. The city of Newport Beach hopes to be able to present the five initiatives that our aviation committee has developed this year for, not for implementation, but for attention and hopefully action. And then we had a aviation committee meeting last night, first time since February 24, and all were in attendance. It was a good meeting, two and a half hours long, a lot of spirited conversation. And the last thing I want to do is thank Grace and our city manager and staff for taking care of a problem that has just cropped up over the city this summer, and that's bridge jumpers at our major bridges throughout the city that connect the mainland to residential islands within our community. Staff has been placed at the bridges, and the problem has literally gone away as a result of it. So on behalf of a number of people who were concerned about this, I thank you for getting on this right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
Yes, I attended the ad hoc committee on homelessness, and I learned a lot primarily because my microphone was not working, so I had to listen the whole time, and I found it very effective. And I'll just say that the city's work on this issue continues, and it's actually pretty robust. And there's more solutions, I think, or not solutions, but more effort coming in the future. I also attended last week, I'm on the Orange County Sanitation District Board representing the city, so I attended that board meeting, and there are 25, 26 members from different cities, all the cities in Orange County represented, and then 15 staff. So it's quite a Zoom meeting with that many people. And but I will tell you again, as I've said here before, it's just an incredible agency that serves all 3 million people plus or minus in Orange County with wastewater treatment, sanitation. And so an incredible amount of engineering, ocean water sampling, infrastructure improvements, and groundwater replenishment through the new GWRS system, going backfilling our aquifers. It's just incredible work, and I'm really proud to be on that board, actually. It does just incredible job. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a few. We had our housing subcommittee meeting. We'll have another one coming up soon. The, I've been attending a lot of TCA subcommittee meetings, and there just seem to be a lot of those. Councilmember Dixon and I teamed up and did another interview with Hoag. This time, we did an interview with their vice president and their chief of staff. Hoag put it up on their website. I encourage you to watch it. I find it very helpful to go to the source on our local healthcare provider to find out what's going on and also to find out what their recommendations are in terms of health, community health. And so I would encourage people to go watch that. The Saturday, although it's a little more subdued, Ben did go. The fundraiser for the Ben Carlson Foundation is occurring where people are paddling from Catalina to the Newport Pier. I still can't believe they do that. But to their primary organizer, Spencer Purdy, and the folks doing that, wish them all the best. And then I've got a few slides here, or a couple slides, I should say. The first is for Oasis. There you go. The Oasis Center has new virtual programs for our residents to enjoy and help stay connected and engaged. This slide shows programs for the month of August. Summer live Zoom events and others are videos posted on our city website. To view the full list of programs and how to join, visit the Oasis website at newportbeachca.gov/ oasis. And as always, our staff is here to assist and can be reached at 949-644-3244, which I think has got to be the most memorized number in our city when I talk to seniors in our community. Anyway, it's 949-644-3244 if you need anything from the Oasis Senior Center. And then the next slide. Each year, Newport Beach participates in the Weyland National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. It's a friendly competition between US cities to save water and promote environmental awareness. Starting August 1, you can take the pledge at www.mywaterpledge.com, which we will make sure that we put that out on our own social media platforms. And you can win prizes, get bragging rights for our city, and help the environment. I encourage everyone to join in, take the pledge. It's always fun. It's fun for the folks who join in on this one around the country. So again, it's www.mywaterpledge.com. And with that, we'll move on to matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. The only one being from councilmember Dixon, consideration of adopting a resolution supporting the Newport Beach Police Department. It's a non-discussion item, so I'll just simply ask people to raise their hands if they would like to see this come back on a future agenda.
That's unanimous, seven zero.
Great. All right, Madam Clerk.
Oops, this is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 12. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right. Council, again, will go from my left to my right.
I have none.
All right, Ms. Brenner.
I have a question. I don't know if it needs to be pulled, but on item number seven, the natural gas reclamation, there was a question that Jim Mosher asked about whether the city actually pursues other options, and I just was asking Grace if maybe we could get an answer to that.
Sure, we can do that. I'll tell you what, why don't we, if you don't mind, I'll go around the horn and then come back to that. Okay? Ms. Dixon.
I have none.
Mr. Muldoon.
Just lodge a no vote on item eight.
All right, Mr. Hurdman.
I have none.
Mr. Avery. All right, and I need to lodge a, or I need to show a conflict on item number four due to a partner due to partnership, or not a partnership, a membership at Pacific Club. All right, coming back to the question on item number seven. Ms. Leung, would you like to take that one, or did you want someone else? Got it.
Thank you. Good evening. Mark Vaquavich, utilities director. Councilmember Brenner, just to answer your question and maybe a few follow-up points. The natural gas that we're transferring to Hoag Hospital has a present market value of about in the $10,000 range per year. So it's a pretty low value. It's a very small, very small 1% to 2% portion of the total gas that Hoag uses. And for them, it's a partnership. It's almost a hassle because now they're dealing with a different kind of gas and a different thing. It was looked at, last officially looked at in a report in 2012. And they looked at different things such as generators, you know, flaring off the gas, which most oil producers do, just burn it and flare it. They also looked at, you know, building like a natural gas station and so on. At the time, nothing came close to being cost-effective. I'm going to keep my eye on it for years to come to see if there's something else we can do with it. At one point in time, it was worth much more, but with the quantities and today's rates, it's very little.
I'd just like to say, I remember in the years when you couldn't drive down the highway without it smelling really bad. So I appreciate that you came up with a solution.
It wasn't me. I want to take credit for it.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right. Then with no items being pulled, we'll go out to public comment on the consent calendar. Do we have any public comment from the community room on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Do we have any calls? All right. Then, Mr. Avery, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move the balance of the consent calendar, items one through 12, with Mr. Muldoon lodging a no vote on item eight, and the mayor accusing himself from item four. And we have amendments on item number one, the minutes. And we have a.
Do we have a second? All right, seconded by Mr. Muldoon. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Okay. We'll go now to public comments on non-agenda items. We'll start first in the community room.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. The non-agenda comment I would like to make is actually a request for you to take action when you get to agenda item Roman numeral XX, Roman numeral 20, which is your opportunity to make motions for reconsideration. What I would like you to reconsider is your July 14th vote to move the business meeting, the starting time of the business meetings to 4:00 P.M. That item appeared out of the blue on the July 14th consent calendar, and it was approved without any of you asking for it to be pulled for public discussion or even asking the staff how they thought it would impact the public. The staff said the problem that was being solved by changing the starting time was that the study sessions overlapped with the regular meetings. The mayor later said that the problem was with bad decisions made when the meetings run until 11:00 without a break after starting at, say, 4:00 in the afternoon with a study session. That is a problem to which there are obvious other solutions, one of which would be, and those solutions would prevent both the overlap and the long uninterrupted meetings. One solution is what the council used to do decades ago, which is to hold the study sessions much earlier in the day so that there was a long break always between them and the evening meeting. And the other horror of horrors is to divide the meetings up on different days so that you meet more often with less on your agenda. Some of you seem to have been told that 7:00 was unusually late starting time for Orange County cities. As I demonstrated in writing, that is simply not true. 7:00 is one of the later, or was one of the later starting times, but it's not at all unusual. Meeting at 4:00 in the afternoon is very unusual, and it's exceeded only by the retirement village of Laguna Woods that starts their meetings at 2:00 in the afternoon and is done before dinner, which is very convenient to the retirees who are their constituents. I would ask you to please reconsider this so that the decision you make will be informed by input from the members of the Newport Beach public who will be impacted by this, who are, I think, quite different than the public in Laguna Woods. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any calls? No. All right, so we'll come in and start our public hearings, which will be item number 13 on the two-year extension, or ordinance number 2020-16, two-year extension to the Hoag Development Agreement. So I'm going to have a question for Simone in just a second, but you can stay there for just a moment. Because I want to preface this by saying a few things. It's worth remembering, as we're kind of moving through on this discussion, why we have a development agreement on the Hoag property. And the reason for that is because they had a development agreement for about 10 years encompassing 455,000 square feet of office and office space, hospital space, which, as everyone up here understands, we have a general plan, and we have a green light initiative that prohibits more square footage than is allocated unless you go to a, unless you go to a vote of the people. And so what we end up with is, when you give this much developable space to one particular property owner in a particular geographic area, you end up with a planning, with planning constraints for that geographic area. And so when they had come up on their, the end of their 10 years, then asked for another 10 years, we had negotiated a development agreement with them to, that encompassed a bunch of terms, but part of the terms was a certain amount of money every year that would go toward the, to find a solution toward homelessness. And then they also assured us in the agreement that they would continue to operate a facility that helps for many different things, including mental health. And so as part of this, they've, Hoag had come to us at the city level and then at the planning commission level and asked for one extra year because they've said, look, when we're working through on COVID, COVID has pushed us back a year on our planning. When it got to the planning commission, the staff report said that Hoag had requested one year. The staff report recommended an extension of one year. And it was at the planning commission level, when there was some discussion going on, that one of the planning commissioners just said essentially, well, financially, there might be an extent, this might last longer than a year, so let's just give them two years. And so there was, there wasn't a robust discussion on this. There was not a financial discussion. There wasn't a planning discussion. They voted on a recommendation of two years. I'm going to tell you right now, I do not support two years. I do support a one-year extension. That one-year extension, if we find ourselves, and Hoag can justify it in a year, to ask us for another one-year extension, maybe we have that discussion now then. But it's probably, it's just worth remembering. We adopted this last year. This development agreement goes up through 2029. So we would be extending it into 2030. I would just say, I would hope that Hoag would be able to figure out what they're going to be doing with the property by 2029, hopefully 2030. But I just don't support two. There's not much justification for it. There was no justification discussed, for the most part, at the planning commission level. And at that point, not a single person on this council, on this dais, will be on the council in 2029. So binding future councils for much longer than that doesn't seem warranted. But I do, Simone, if you wouldn't mind coming up, I wanted to talk just for a moment. It'll be brief. But could you talk through what I had mentioned about the 455,000 square feet? Could you just kind of explain, generally speaking, what that means, what that encompasses, and what that would, what that ties up in the context of our general plan, green light initiative issues?
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. Simone Georgis, Community Development Director. Mayor O'Neill is correct. The Hoag has an agreement with the city, and that agreement gives them rights to develop their campus. And that, and they can develop it pretty much anywhere on the campus, either the upper campus or the lower campus. And that square footage is equivalent to 455,000 square feet of development rights. And think of it as just, just a bit in context, that's equivalent to a high-rise tower. It's not going to be a high-rise tower, but just the size and magnitude. It's a lot of square footage. That square footage is equivalent to a large number of trips that already have been analyzed through an EIR process. If the campus is fully built out, you're looking over maybe about 9,000 trips a day. That's a significant amount of trips. So they are holding on to 455,000 square feet of development rights. This rights gives them the right to develop, and you don't have to go through a green light vote. It's already been approved by the city council in the past. In this, in today's era where we're at, right now, we're trying to figure out sites with regards to housing and RENA numbers. So now they're asking for an extension to already a 10-year agreement that this council has already granted to them. Due to COVID, they're asking for, they asked, their request was one year. The planning commissioners want, the planning commission wanted to give them the two years, thinking that COVID would extend even beyond that. So hopefully that summarizes everything at this point.
I think so. So my point is, Hoag's been a fantastic partner throughout this. They continue to be a fantastic partner. We're now talking about development rights issues. I do frankly hope that they develop this because I'd like to see the healthcare continue to expand in our city. But, you know, extending it out two years at this, at least at this point, is unwarranted, in my opinion. Any further discussion before we go to public comment? Ms. Dixon first, and then Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I intend to support your position. And thank you, Mr. Georgis, for clarifying. When we went through this and were considering this agreement a year ago, which I believe we approved unanimously for the 10-year. And just to follow up on Mr. Georgis' point, as we're going through the housing RENA, looking for plots of land and lots within our city to build 4,800 housing units, this 450,000 square feet of property is, of course, reserved for Hoag, and they are entitled to that due to the agreement. But now an extra year and potentially a second year means that we cannot access that property for the trips that have been reserved for that square footage. We cannot use that, those trips for any other development property in the city. So they have a hold on that now for 10 years, now maybe 11 years, and potentially 12 years. When we are at a critical juncture in our planning history going forward is to identify property where we can accommodate additional housing, and trips go with the housing. So they've taken, it's like they've got a hold on the bank of our potential development, our development rights. So I'm fully supportive. Hoag is just an amazing partner, what they're doing for our community with COVID. And as the mayor mentioned earlier, we work with them and learn from them and appreciate and take great pride in what they are giving back to our community and keeping our community healthy and safe. But I think a one-year extension and recognizing their contributions to our community is appropriate. So thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mayor. Simone, if they were to be granted two years, would they pay the same dollar amount for the second year?
So this evening's ordinance that's in front of you, there's no, any additional fees with regards to any development agreement. So the answer is no, there's no additional fees to the two years.
So is there additional fee for one of the two years?
No, there isn't. Their request was just a one-year extension. That was their original request.
A one-year extension without a fees?
That's correct.
Oh, thank you, okay. So this will be two years without fees?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Avery.
Ms. Georgis, this amount of square footage, and I probably know what has to answer to it, but it wouldn't get done all at once. It would take a number of years for Hoag to do that, and they'd probably do it stages. And or do you think?
I would expect that. It would be a phased project.
Right.
Unless they wanted to build a tower, but I would expect them a phased project of some sort.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Simone.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go out to public comment first in the community room.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. First of all, at least to me, the idea that we, that Hoag feels they need this development agreement is very strange to me because I cannot envision any city council in Newport Beach ever taking away from Hoag any of the rights that they already have in the general plan. And I don't think those can be exchanged for housing in a way that would avoid a green light vote, by the way. Whether they need a development agreement or not, they have it protecting that entitlement for which they have offered to pay this $300,000 a year, which raises, in my mind, two questions, as Councilman Muldoon suggested. Should there be an extra $300,000 for the extension? The second, to me, more important question, which I raised to the planning commission, but it was beyond their area of expertise. They felt it was up to you to consider that, is whether the $300,000 that was negotiated a year or two ago in the current agreement seems to be confined to being used for operating a homeless shelter. In your closed session today, you had a private conversation about possibly partnering with Costa Mesa in some way that the public has not been told yet how that will work. The question I raised to the planning commission, do you need now more flexibility in the development agreement? So instead of just extending the term, do you need to clarify how that $300,000 can be used by the city? Is it too specific? Because at the time, the development agreement was extended, and the $300,000 was added. The city had visions of operating its own homeless shelter. You were unable to find an operator for that, so you might need more flexibility now. Thank you. And in which case, since the development agreement is open, this would be the time to change or renegotiate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any calls on this one? No. All right, we'll bring it back up to the dais. I'm going to make a motion to approve staff recommendation as to one year instead of two.
I second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joy.
It's not working.
That's okay.
It's like Jeopardy.
Would you, so I've made a motion, it's seconded by Ms. Dixon, but Ms. Brenner, go ahead.
I just wanted to say a couple of things about the planning commission's recommendation. I think we all love Hoag Hospital, and I understand how, in their consideration, they want us to be as favorable toward Hoag as possible. But the planning commission is also not responsible for balancing the budget in the city of Newport Beach, and they are not responsible for finding the money for our, whatever homeless solution that we come up with. So I think that it's really more imperative that we look at this from a broader perspective rather than just how favorably we feel toward Hoag Hospital.
I appreciate that. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. I cannot think of a better neighbor for us to have than Hoag. When you consider the aging population, the quality care, and attention to the community we get from Hoag, their response to the pandemic, and our hopes that they succeed, you know, I just, my personal philosophy about government is to be as helpful as possible. So I'll make a substitute motion to approve the two-year agreement offered by the planning commission.
Second that.
All right, seconded by Mr. Duffield. Go ahead, Mr. Duffield.
So, you know, when you're talking about money, money is money. You ought to ask Steve Jobs about how his money helped him. Without health, without a health place like Hoag Hospital, I don't see how you possibly can relate homes and money to health. Until you go there and they save your life, I guess you can say and be in the position that you are. So it's just, this is embarrassing. The city has never stepped up and helped Hoag Hospital, to my knowledge, ever. I don't know any. And, you know, my dad and his friends started the 552 Club there. They didn't get anything from the city. They went out into the neighborhood and asked for money and got it. And that's why we have this hospital now. And to think that you're trying to deal with homes and other things. You don't need a home when you're dead. You have. things, you, you don't need a home when you're dead. You, you have to have health first. That's first. Because it doesn't do you a lot of good if you have a lot of money and you're not around. So I, I think it's something that is, is whatever Hoag, whatever we can do for Hoag, we need to help them, not stand in their way. Now, I know this was proposed by the planning commission and I respect them. And obviously they, they know that it'll help them and I want to help Hoag. So that's what I'm going to do.
Appreciate that. Mr. Avery.
So what is the impact on Hoag by doing this?
Do you want Simone to answer that?
Yes.
All right.
Does this hurt their operation?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Avery, as far as their, how does that impact Hoag with the one year or the two year?
Well, just going from, we were at two and now there's a motion for one. So if we went to one, what would the impact be? Or what do you think it might be? Obviously, they probably have a better clue on that.
You know, I, I think with the one year, they, they would, one year versus two years, it's, there's more, one year, you only have, you have a sense of urgency that you still, you have 10 years left on your DA. You got that one year. So you still got 10 years to hire the architects, develop the project and construction management, submit to the city. So 10 years is plenty. So that's with the one year. Now with the, the, for two years, now you've got 11 years. So, you know, it's, it's a change of urgency, really.
Right. And then, but we, in this, if we see a further disruption due to COVID, we could roll back to two, right?
So, so the, the, the motion on the second right now is to approve the two-year. So if you approved the two-year, we wouldn't be able to roll it back to the, to one year. So if you have approved the one year, then at some later point, you could, you could expand the extension to two.
And that's the intention is to sort of monitor it and then have the option to go for another.
As we know, things change all the time, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, there is no, we're forgiving Hoag the annual payment. There is no additional cost to Hoag. It's a cost to the city. We are waiving, the city is waiving that annual cost if we were to want it to renegotiate, which this is an amended agree, to the amendment to the agreement. For all intents and purposes, the city could have said, okay, sure, Hoag, you could go 11 years, but it's another $300,000. Or for two years, it's another $600,000 because we're taking the property off the books. We are not charging Hoag a penny. We're giving them an extra year. And if there is a problem, for whatever reason, even beyond Hoag 10 years from now, if they say, you know, we still don't have our plans together, can we have another year? It'll be another council that can make that decision. So just to be clear, we're not charging Hoag a penny. We are forgiving them three, the potential of having to amend the contract and pay the additional $300,000 for the 11th year. We're not doing that. So there's no cost to the city. Excuse me, there is a cost to the city potentially, but there's no cost to Hoag, not a penny. Thank you.
Yeah. I'll just finish up by saying, I, I agree that Hoag is doing a great job. I think that they, that in a situation like this where we obviously are land constrained and we need to continue to plan through in our city, you know, there are, when we're talking about 455,000 square feet, that is substantial. And they've had that, 455,000 square feet, Simone, this is accurate for at least now 12 years. Yeah, and they haven't built it. And I, I, I hope that they do. Because to your point, Mr. Duffield, I think that they're doing, they, they really do need to continue to increase the, the, the ability to provide great healthcare that they're already doing. City is happy to have provided it for the last 12 years. Will continue to provide it for at least nine more. And if we do this, it'll be 10. So I, I think that this is appropriate to look at for one year extension for now. And then in the future, we can look at it again. But, you know, again, coming back, not one of us is going to be on the council in nine, 10 years. And so I'm always reticent to buying future councils on, especially on something like this. But I will be voting no on the two-year. And then on, if, if, if that particular motion fails, then coming back around on the one, I'll be voting for yes on that. Mr. Hurdman.
Just a quick comment that, and it's already been said twice, but let me say it a third time. Hoag is the one that requested the one-year extension. It was Hoag Hospital. So I'm sure a great deal of thought, planning went into that request. And I like to think that we're flexible enough that if next year they need another extension, that we would certainly consider that. Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. So the motion on the table is to approve the staff recommendation, which came from the planning commission for two years. And so we'll, we'll go ahead and vote on that motion.
With council members Avery Dixon, Brenner, Hurdman, and Mayor O'Neil voting no, the motion fails 2-5.
Okay. Comes back around to the original motion on the table, which is a staff recommendation, but with one year instead of two. And on that, on this motion, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Yes, Hoag had requested, they were very grateful for the two years generously offered by planning commission. They applied for one and they were thrilled to see two. We weren't able to have the votes to get to, unfortunately Duffy, but I still would support, obviously, giving them one. I'd support giving as much as we can. So voting for this one-year is still a good thing and it's not contradictory to want to give them one if they can't give two. So I just wanted to state that in case those at home are confused as to why I would support one. Gladly support one as well. Thank you.
Fair enough. All right. So the motion on the table is the one-year. So go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2020-18. And it, I know the agenda says 16, we needed to renumber that. So ordinance number 2020-18, an ordinance of the city council of city of Newport Beach, amending a development agreement between the city of Newport Beach and Hoag Memorial Hospital Presbyterian. The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Thank you. All right. We'll bring forward item number 14. Item 14, had a good, long staff report. Did anyone ask, would like, anyone like a staff recommendation? Or I'm sorry, presentation? Oh, good. Okay. All right. We'll go to the public comment in the community room first. Do we have any public comment?
Mayor O'Neil, members of the council, the item before you, which I don't think you mentioned, is some technical revisions to the zoning and local coastal implementation plan, sections of our municipal code. The Title 21 changes to the coastal part of that from you as just a recommendation or request to the coastal commission. It has some technical problems, I believe, with it. And those will presumably get straightened out by the coastal commission staff and will come back to you as something that you will finally adopt. I don't believe there's any technical, any substantive problems with the part that you would be approving or introducing for approval tonight to Title 20. But I would point out that, that Mayor O'Neil has advocated for trying to reduce the scope, the, the number of words we have in our regulations. And if you look at page 14-10 of your staff report, this is the part the ordinance you're introducing tonight, you'll see a whole page of words that is being added to our municipal code, which is actually just repeating another section of the code. So it could have been done much more efficiently with fewer words. But the comment is no, is non-substantive. So I have no objection to your introducing the ordinance as written, but it is much lengthier than it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any, any call-ins? Okay. We'll bring it back. I'm going to go ahead and move staff recommendation, seconded by Mr. Muldoon. Any discussion? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
All right. We'll go to item number 15. And given that part of this, part of the staff report had to do with a decision that came out of the recommendation from the aviation committee last night, it's probably worth just doing a very brief explanation of what the recommendation was. And I'm happy to take that from literally anyone if I'm, okay. Simone, man, look at you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So is it, is it an explanation of the ALUC determination? Or what's the, the item on the agenda sign?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize. In my head, I apologize. Yep, I'm sorry. I confused this with item 17. Sorry about that. Item 15, there's lengthy staff report on this. Does anyone need a staff presentation? Sorry about that.
I have a question.
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead. Simone.
As long as Simone, come back up. Just to clarify, the purpose of this item number 15 is simply to really give a heads up to ALUC, the Airport Land Use Commission, that the city will potentially be challenging its vote on this particular development project. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's simply a notice. You're not approving the project. There, there's more to, we'll come back to you September 8th with the actual project and introduce some additional ordinances and entitlements. Today it's just a notice. That's all you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
You know what? I'm sorry. I did have, so you got two more council members and actually me to, Jeff, do you mind if I, I forgot I was going to ask a question? Okay. I did have a question, Simone. One of the, on, if anyone's watching from home, on page 15-11, one of the statements made in this is, and I'm going to just read it out loud so people don't have to go jump through. Credit could be given for the project towards meeting a significant portion of the city's upcoming RENA, due to the RENA being Regional House Needs Assessment. Due to the fact that the project meets all criteria as a viable housing opportunity site pursuant to state housing and element law. Could you expand just a little on that? Because that's, I admit, I'm, I'm trying to, as I'm working through, especially as I'm listening at the, as the, as, you know, the ex officio member of the Housing Update Committee, and we're looking for it. The number one location people would like to see more housing, if we have to put it in based on the state standards, is the airport area. And we're now in the airport area talking about housing. And I, this was going to be one of the, like, as I'm reading through, I had actually put RENA next to a couple of sections. And then I get to that sentence and I stopped and said, oh, okay, well, there you go. Could you, could you explain just a little bit how this, how something that we are looking at right now could factor into the next, the next cycle, even though, you know, we haven't actually been given our RENA number yet? That's why I'm, I was just struggling with the technicalities of it. So if you couldn't explain, if you could explain a little bit of that, that'd, that'd be helpful.
Certainly. So we're currently, as the mayor stated, we're currently working on the next housing element cycle through our housing committee. And one of the challenges is really to find properties, to find sites, so we can plan for and zone for and establish policies for the 4,800 housing units. And half of those, if you remember, are affordable. They're very low and low. So it's a challenge to find it. You, and, and what's even different nowadays is that the HCD has stated that not only you need to find locations, but you need substantial evidence that that property will turn over into housing. It's not just put an overlay zone. You need a, a property owner that raises their hand and say, yes, I will build housing on my property. That's why the housing crisis is such a significant challenge for every city, especially the city of Newport Beach. So for a project like this, where you actually have a willing property owner that comes to the city and says, hey, how about if I change my property from a commercial use to a use that allow residential housing? And how about I add affordable units to it? Would you be favorite, look favorable to that? And so for me, from, as the director, I have a property owner that's willing to take entitlement risk, go through the process and kind of roll the dice and see if they actually get a project approved. And at the same time, I can use this project and put it into my next housing element and show HCD that I have a property that is willing to turn over into housing and a portion of it is going to be affordable. You know, so it's, for me, it's a win-win. I, I need a project like this and put in the housing element so that I can solve our RENA numbers and show HCD that we're, we're planning for everything.
All right. That is very wonky. This whole, this whole process is going to be really wonky. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Hurdman.
I served on the Airport Land Use Commission last year and we, we never found, when I was on, on the commission, we never found a project inconsistent. Everything was consistent that we looked at. So you said a few minutes ago that this puts the ALUC on notice if we were to pass this motion tonight. What does that mean? Put it on notice? Are we saying to them, fine, we hear you, but we're going to go ahead with this project? No. What does it mean?
No, it's just, it, by, by law, we have to give them a 45-day notice before this council takes any further action on the project. So now we send them a copy of the resolution and let them know that in the future, this council is going to consider this project in this location. That gives ALUC an opportunity to send in their letters to provide, make comments, whether they, they've already said they're, they find it inconsistent. So it, it gives them an opportunity to write back to the city council and say why they find it inconsistent, why they don't want a project like this. So it puts them on notice. We have a 45-day period before this council takes any further action on this project.
Okay, but keep walking that through.
So, so we'll send, if, if the council adopts the item this evening, that resolution goes to the Airport Land Use Commission. They'll, they'll go ahead and most likely draft comment letters back to the city. We're going to come back to the city council September 8th and introduce the project to you and tell you everything about the project and about the land use and the zoning and the general plan amendment for this project. It's just an introduction of the ordinance. You're not going to approve a project, but we're going to introduce that ordinance. Then two weeks later, we'll come back again on, I'm doing the math in my head, two weeks later, we'll come back in September 2nd meeting of September for, if, if it does move forward for a final consideration by the city council, whether they want to adopt this project or not.
Where's the Airport Land Use Commission come in then?
So the Airport Land Use Commission has all.
They added the picture at that point?
They've already heard this project. So the Airport Land Use Commission has found this project to be inconsistent with the airport land use plan.
Right.
And so they've, they've already had that hearing. They don't like a project this close to the airport. They find it inconsistent. They are probably going to tell the council at some later time, don't approve a project like this in this location.
Okay. But we don't have to heed their advice?
Nope. We, we control our destiny.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry, Joy, just one second. I want to, one quick follow-up to Mr. Hurdman's point. When was the last time the city overrode an ALUC decision?
So it was Measure Y and the vote, and the Uptown Project.
How about the Museum House and the Crescent?
No.
Just those two projects, Measure Y and the Uptown Project.
Uptown. Interesting. All right, Ms. Brenner.
I'm not sure exactly what their finding of inconsistent means. Is it because they think that that close to the airport is not safe? Or is it because they hope that land will be used for airport expansion?
The, you know, what I, what I gather from, from the commission is that they, you know, airports are inherently noisy. They don't want residential projects close, too close to the airport because they're afraid that residents that live in residential will just complain about the noise. And so the last thing they want is more residential next to the airport. So that's one issue. Second issue that they have is that the location, it's, it's downwind, if you, if you know air traffic patterns, downwind for the general aviation. So they're afraid in the future, if there is a general aviation crash of some sort, that project, it's a housing project. And if there, there's a problem with a plane, it may hit that building. And so that's, that's another concern for them. So they, they have these theoreticals. What we've done from a staff analysis, we've looked at the plan. They have a plan. We followed their plan. Their plan, this housing is, is allowed in this location. That's per their plan. And at the same time, now we're coming to the city council and asking you if you want to have a residential project in this property and, and change the zone to allow that to happen. So there's, that's some of the concerns that ALUC has.
If they're concerned about properties being downwind from the airport, all of Newport Beach is downwind from the airport, so.
I misspoke a little bit. It's, it's, it's a, it's a pattern for their left runway, the general aviation where they take off and go around.
One real question is, so Jim Mosher brought up the fact that there would be a liability issue if we went against them and voted to approve a project like this. What is your understanding of that?
So if, the, the way the, the state law states is that if the city found, did they override, that now the airport is not liable and that's in law. Now, so the question is becomes, it becomes a legal question. We haven't talked to our city attorney's office yet about where does that liability transfer to? There's a lot of immunities for cities too. So just because they're not liable, doesn't automatically mean that now the city's liable.
We'll learn more about that later.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Dixon.
Yes, Mr. Juergis, a few more questions. So in the materials that we have in our binder, I guess it led to ALUC's decision that the FAA does not approve this particular proposed project because it. FAA does not approve this particular proposed project because it exceeds the FAA height requirement. So the proposed project, as I understand it, is at 85 feet. The FAA would, would, well, would approve, I don't know if they would approve it, but the height limit for FAA is 80 foot high, feet high. Is that correct?
Excuse me. So the, the project, FAA approved the project at 80 feet?
Yes.
And the applicant's saying, no, no, it's 85 feet. So the applicant needs to work this out with FAA before we return back to the city council. So they, they would like it to be at 85 feet. They're working it through with the FAA right now.
All right, so maybe when we get to the point of our proposed motion, would it be appropriate to just go on record that before this comes back to the city council, that the height is in conformance with the FAA? Is that, would that be appropriate?
That's, that's okay.
And then also, in the materials that were for our review, in the binder, the director of John Wayne Airport, Mr. Rondanella, wrote a letter in opposition to this project for the, basically the reasons you were just discussing with Ms. Brenner about the residential impact or quality of life impact to residents living within a stone's throw of the airport, literally across the street. And the airport management saying, we deal with noise complaints from the residents of Newport Beach on a daily basis, and here you're going to put 444 residential housing units right next to the airport. We're going to be, we, the airport, are going to be dealing with this. How are, how can you defend this, the city of Newport Beach? How do we defend that?
But I, I think that's further discussion. That's when, when we return back to the city council on September 8th, we'll be able to kind of talk that through more about the merits of this project. And that's what, you know, staff will make a presentation, and the applicant will make a presentation based on its merits.
And it is ironic, I guess, a coincidental, that in a few minutes this evening, we'll be discussing the general aviation improvement plan that will take place at John Wayne Airport. And we, as a city, are partners with John Wayne and appreciate their support of the city, particularly, especially in this proposed general aviation improvement plan. And it's ironic that we would be contradicting or opposing a recommendation to, to the city of Newport Beach, and we're still asking their support on listening to us and our preferences for our quality of life and our residents who want improved quality of life because of airport issues that we would be going against the airport in this particular matter. But to be continued, it's just, these are interesting issues that we need to resolve or discuss again when they come forward in September. Thank you.
Ms. Muldoon.
Thank you. If the airport staff had their way, we'd have LAX. We'd have tons of terminals, we'd have 24 hours, we'd have a long runway. These are people who live for aviation. And unless, as long as Harrison Ford stays away from our strip, I think we'll be safe with this housing. I do think the Airport Land Use Commission is a different entity. You know, these people are similar. They're worried about noise complaints and future of the airport. I don't have those concerns. I have concerns for the residents. I want residents to make complaints about noise if there's noise. I want there to be a population density along the airport, so the airport can't expand. So I, I do not share the same vision as, as Airport Land Use. If we have to have RENA numbers because Sacramento is mandated the law, I would like to put them basically by the airport, so that airport can't expand. And that's my long-term vision, and that's why I have no problem overruling this committee that is totally directed. And I see someone is, is going to jump on me on this, because he served on that commission. But, okay, okay, thanks, Jeff. But, you know, it's, it's no offense to the land, to the Airport Land Use Commission, that good people, dedicated aviation, I'm dedicated to quality of life personally, so I'll be supporting this item. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Herdman.
When you serve on the, when you take a look at a project as an Airport Land Use Commissioner, you have a template that sits on top of a project, and you're basically just going down a checklist and making sure that the project is in line with everything on that checklist. And when it's not, for example, height, the responsibility for correcting that goes back to the developer, okay? It doesn't go back to the airport, to the Airport Land Use Commission, to the Board of Supervisors, or to the city council within which this project is being built. That's basically all it is. They're looking for, their whole issue is safety. That's their whole issue, what they're looking out for. So you mentioned that the developer is, is working with the FAA on lowering the height to the structure. And once that's done, if that's the only thing that it was inconsistent with, it's a done deal.
Mr. Avery.
So I'm just curious, looking forward 10, 20 years, how much more of this is going to come forward in the airport area?
And council member Avery, good question. I mean, the Housing Committee that's, that's formed now, and the, the airport area is the prime location for housing.
Right.
So, you know, there's no other location. And so I, I think you're, we're going to see a lot more residential projects in the, in the airport area, as you said, 10, 20 years from now.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, and to Mr. Herdman's point, ALLOC has a certain way they need to look at, they have legal obligations to look at certain things differently than, than we do. So anyway, I see no further requests for speaking, so we'll go out to public comment on this first in the community room.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. Since there was no staff report, probably for the benefit of those who are watching at home, helpful to point out that this proposal is to add 440, potentially 444 new dwelling units to our general plan. It's not just in the airport area, it is in the airport area as close as is legally possible to put housing to the airport immediately across the street on campus. Also, as to the previous finding of inconsistency with Measure Y, I believe the matter that was found inconsistent was exactly the same proposal which was in Measure Y. As council member Muldoon pointed out, there is an advantage to us of putting housing extremely close to the airport, because it will generate complaints. But I think it is very understandable, as Councilwoman Dixon pointed out, that the airport would be confused about that, when we say we're trying to do everything we can and asking for their cooperation to try to reduce impacts of airport noise and pollution on residents, and then come around and say we want to put residents in an area where they're going to be highly impacted. The other comment I wanted to make, the mayor drew attention to page 15-11. If you look towards the top of that, you will see a prediction from our city staff that as a result of overriding this, not only is, has the Airport Land Use Commission found this project inconsistent, but they're likely to find the city an, what they call an inconsistent agency. And it might be helpful to get some clarification of what that status would mean to the city, if anything, if we become an inconsistent agency. And then finally, for the public, I think it would be helpful to know, since, since the Airport Commission, Airport Land Use Commission made their decision, who is it that is pushing to override that decision? Is the city the one that is behind the move to override it? Or is the applicant asked the city and paying for this lengthy process it will take to do this? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. My name is Patrick Strater with Starpoint Ventures, on behalf of the property owner, John Saunders. We urge you tonight to adopt this intention to override, so that when we come back in the following hearings, you have an opportunity to hear the public benefits, the, the general planning concepts, everything that's gone into this project. So I just wanted to give you a, a quick background that I think would lend a little importance to this particular decision, and I'll save the majority of my comments for the actual hearing on the project. But this project has been conceptualized by John Saunders, the owner, since 2006 as part of his participation in the city's general plan update in '06. And as many of you remember, in 2006, the city of Newport Beach adopted a certain, I call it an overlay, there's a little disagreement whether it was an overlay or, but in, regardless, there were units that were studied in the general plan for the airport area of Newport Beach. So contrary to what Mr. Mosher just said, these are not new units in the general plan. These are existing units from the 2006 general plan update that was adopted by the voters of the city of Newport Beach. In 2013 and 2014, I participated in the city's general plan update, land use element update committee hearings. And on behalf of John, we attended nine hearings to discuss this particular site being appropriate for residential use. During that process, the city council in 2014, as part of the general plan amendment that became the Measure Y vote, not only agreed and put this particular site into the general plan update as an MUH2 residential zoned property, but at that point, the Airport Land Use Commission found that general plan update by the city to be inconsistent, and the city council subsequently overrode that decision by the Airport Land Use Commission. And ultimately, after the EIR was certified, the override was granted, the voters of Newport Beach did not approve that general plan update in Measure Y for a wide variety of issues. We don't believe that this particular site was, was any particular issue that the voters disliked. But we immediately filed in December of that year for the project in front of you as a standalone general plan amendment to allow these residential units that were approved in 2006, and again in 14 for this site, to be studied specifically on this site. So just another brief moment, if I could, to give you the background for what you're doing here this evening. Contrary to what Mr. Herdman said, I have never seen a residential project approved or found consistent by the Airport Land Use Commission. I've seen probably 20 to 30 projects in the cities of Santa Ana, Tustin, Irvine, and Newport Beach, the ones mentioned by staff. Any residential that's anywhere near the airport is typically found by the Land Use Commission to be inconsistent because it is residential in nature. So for those reasons, we encourage you to adopt this notice of intention this evening, so that we can come back and give you the, the benefits of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers in the community room? All right, seen none. Any calls on this one? Okay. I, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is Nancy Scarborough. I just would like to point out, I, I'm not calling to dispute this project. It's actually a project that I might support under conditions, depending on the hearings in September. However, I'd like to point out that this is a prime example of what we're dealing with with RENA. This is a project that has 40, 440 units. 10% of those units would be low-income. That's 40 of 2,800. Using that math, we would have to have approximately 40,000 to 50,000 units, additional units in Newport Beach. And I think it's important that the public understand that in this process, and this is just a good opportunity to remind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other calls? No. All right, we'll bring it back. Mr. Herdman.
Yeah, I just feel like I need to make a few additional comments, especially after the last speaker. Keep in mind, I only served on the Airport Land Use Commission for one year, and during that one year, what I said was in fact true in terms of consistent and inconsistent project Because of Newport Beach, because of our aviation committee, because of the concern that this council has about quality of life issues that JWA creates for our community, we have to keep in mind that a lot of work is being done in terms of the effect that JWA has on our community. Legislation is being worked on, for example, right now, that incentivizes airlines to implement, to purchase and implement and fly the quietest engines possible. And that's going to continue to improve over the years. Our aviation committee right now is working with key stakeholders, decision-makers, that have to do with quality of life issues about John Wayne Airport. Keep in mind, too, that we're the only airport in, and this is all in relation to building housing next to the airport, is why I'm making these comments. We're the only airport in the country that has a settlement agreement. Planes don't fly from 11 o'clock at night until 7:00 in the morning. It's very practical to have a home located next to an airport where planes are not taking off between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And as far as the airport director's letter discouraging this project, let's face it, they, they just don't want any more complaints about noise. That's the bottom line, okay? So I, I just felt I needed to point these things out. I mean, I live this and breathe this stuff every day, so. And we've got, we've got a serious issue that we have to meet when it comes to RENA and the numbers. So airport housing is, is an obvious solution to that. I think it's really important to remember about the curfew, though. It's not as if planes are taken off 24 hours a day from that airport.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Just a quick question, Mr. Juergis. This is, when this comes back, we'll discuss it in September. Just to clarify what the speaker said, with the 2006 general plan, I thought in your staff report that this property is owned office-commercial? Is that correct? So would there be a general plan amendment, is my question?
That's correct. It would be a general plan amendment. Correct.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Brief comments and then a motion I'm going to make, to Mrs. Scarborough's excellent point about the math. The RENA numbers are tricky. Right now, it, it's not as if we have to hit those numbers exactly, but we have to show good faith. Good faith that we are approving housing and clearing low-income housing, makes sense to be by the airport. We've got to give it the call, it's a try. So the percentages does not necessarily follow, that will be consistently done in other proposals down the road. It's an excellent point, so I wanted to address her point. I'll make a motion to approve staff item.
Seconded by Mr. Herdman. I guess, one, one last comment on my side, which is, you know, just, it's probably worth remembering, anyone who buys into a place like this or chooses to live in a place like this knows where they're going to be moving and kind of knows what they're going to be getting into, as opposed to people on Ruby Avenue who thought they were getting one thing, and then the FAA decided they were getting another. So anyway, all right, we've got a motion on the table, the second. Any further discussion? All right, seen none, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. And then real, real quickly, realize that on item 14, Ms. Brown had not read the ordinance title, so we're going to go back to 14 for just a second, so she can do that, and then move on to 16.
Thank you, Mayor. For item 14, ordinance number 2020-19, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, adopting code amendment number CA 2019-001 to amend Title 20, planning and zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, correcting and clarifying provisions related to overlays and public hearing notice requirements.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move to item 16, temporary adjustment, city council seating arrangement due to social distancing guidelines. This comes up because A1 has a certain seating arrangement. We'd need to waive that arrangement if we were going to do so at the city council level. Ms. Leong, any further discussion on that, or?
I, I think it would be helpful to have the direction from the council of the, what's suggested in here is a rotation for, aside from the mayor and the mayor pro tem, who run the meeting, for the other council members to rotate seats for an equity, you know, distribution. But obviously, we are open to whatever the council desires on that.
Like rochambeau?
That could also be, or arm wrestling.
Arm wrestling, wow.
Any discussion up here? All right, we'll go out to public comment on this. Any, any public comment? Any phone calls? All right. I'm, I'm just going to move staff recommendation on a modified A1 basis until we have come back together up at the, up at the full complement at the dais. All right, we'll, seconded by Mr. Herdman. Any discussion? All right. Go ahead. Go ahead.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, we'll move to item 17. This is, sorry, this is what I was, thought I was referencing. Just a quick update on aviation committee from last night. I'm going to assume everyone's read the staff report, but if you couldn't, if you would just expand real quickly for members of the public and council members what the vote was, discussion was, and then we can bring it back up to the dais for discussion.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I have a few visuals for you. I won't go through the whole staff report again. Trying to advance the slide. So last evening, the aviation committee held its monthly meeting, and they reviewed their own ad hocs evaluations of the pieces of the proposals that the county released related to the fixed base operators for John Wayne Airport. And based upon that evaluation, they evaluated them according to how well they align with the city's goals, which actually, I think we skipped a slide when you advanced them. The goals for the project, did we just want to go back to, for me? There we go. So these were the city's goals for the project. They, our ad hoc took that limited information that was produced by the county, took a look at what they had, and they actually talked to all seven proposers and evaluated the documents according to how well they met the city's goals. This is a summary of their findings. Last night, the aviation committee reviewed these findings, did not change any of the findings, but they actually augmented them. And what we forward to the county, the aviation committee would like us to reiterate the importance of the set aside the county agreed to when they adopted the project for small planes and for the larger GA planes. And this is the map that the county had in its resolution when they adopted the project. The green areas are the set asides for small GA, which is aircraft that are 49 feet or under in wingspan or 12,500 feet or less. The yellow area is kind of a mixed use. That's where you can have your corporate jets or maybe also some light GA. So they took a look at that, and the committee said, you know, we really need to make sure that this diagram, this language is in the leases that they, that the county approves with the fixed base operators. And they also asked for the language to include the elimination of the general aviation facility. And this is the office run by Customs and Border Patrol that is the international processing for general aviation passengers. This has been a concern of the community, and the aviation committee felt that we should advance language to the county, that asked the county to also put in the leases that the fixed base operators cannot operate a GAF at John Wayne Airport. This is the amended recommendation we have for you tonight. Late today, you received a supplemental staff report explaining their findings, and this is that new recommendation for your consideration.
Okay. Discussion at the dais. Who would like to go first? All right, Ms. Dixon.
We, I'll let Mr. Hurdman speak, but we will be adding some additional language and to make sure, I'll speak conceptually, that the green area that is built out, that is -- would you mind going back to the map, please, just to everyone's edification? The green area is where the small planes, the small private planes would be housed in hangars and tie downs. We want to be sure that that green area, we want to specify this in our communications with the board of supervisors, that this green area is built out in a manner that preserves the current ratio of 40, 50, and 60-foot hangars. That's the width, that describes the width of the wingspan, and also eliminates the ability of any lessee to construct and operate a general aviation facility, or at a minimum restricts the hours of operation of this facility to 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So I'll leave it to Mr. Hurdman, who has managed this whole process so well, but it is emphatic desire of the aviation committee to incorporate this additional language so that it is clear when expressed to, in a letter from the mayor to the board of supervisors, that the city of Newport Beach is supportive of, as indicated in the chart, of the applicants with this additional recommendation and request. So thank you.
All right, Mr. Hurdman.
I need to give credit where credit is due. Diane was mayor when all of this was going on with the board of supervisors, and I'm just going to kind of cut right to it. Diane knew exactly what she was doing. She struck a deal with Michelle Steele on large jets or small jets. We understood that that was going to be part of the proposal, and we want to hold the board of supervisors to that agreement. That's basically what we're trying to do here. Right, Diane?
Absolutely. You are correct. Thank you very much.
So that's what it boils down to. So when we get to the motion, please remember, counsel, what Diane just said. I'll repeat it if I'm allowed to make the motion to make -- but that's the essence of what we're doing here. We're kind of adding an addendum, if you will, to the work that was done by the aviation committee last night. And let me tell you that getting approval from the aviation committee for this was not an easy task last night. It was a two-and-a-half-hour-long meeting. There was an awful lot of discussion. The vote was eight to six in favor of this motion. The people that voted no were not comfortable, on the aviation committee, were not comfortable sending this recommendation to us tonight without knowing exactly what the wording was going to be. But Aaron saved us at the meeting and basically verbalized what the wording was going to be so that the motion was able to go through. So we're not necessarily under a time gun here, but if we delay this and delay it and delay it, there's always the danger of the board of supervisors saying to us, Newport Beach, we gave you ample opportunity. We gave you ample time. You formed a subcommittee. We provided the subcommittee with the information that they needed in order to evaluate these proposals, and we need to hear from you. We need a recommendation from you. And thank God they're asking us for our recommendation, because they don't have to. Thank you.
Diane, just a second. So could you go back two slides? Thanks. So basically, as I understand the proposed revised language that --
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Hurdman and Ms. Dixon are going to be proposing here.
There it is. Yeah, okay.
So basically, you take the second bullet point here, and what we would be doing is we would be saying that the, so keep in mind, because we're going to go back in just a second, that current ratio, 40, 50, and 60-foot hangars, could you go back to two slides up? There you go. So what we would be saying is, we'd be addending the first language to basically say, with the green area built out in a manner that preserves the current ratio of 40, 50, and 60-foot hangars. So that's what we're looking at right here, the green area. And then to the GAF point, the idea is to eliminate the ability of any lessee to construct and operate a general aviation facility, and the addendum would say, or at a minimum restricts the hours of the GAF to the maximum extent possible.
Eight to 10, right.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure, when the motion's made, I just want to make sure I understood it as I'm looking at the --
Okay, and I don't want to have to repeat that when I --
Okay, fair enough. All right, going back, Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Hurdman, also for your kind words. It takes a village to do all this. I really have to say that this drawing, that is green and yellow, has been the guiding light, and this was created by Supervisor Steele and her conviction that if we define the real estate, we can confine the usage on the airport ground. So this is really critical, and the reason that this is going forward this way, and also credit the board of supervisors, I guess it was, when was this, last September? When they agreed to, the city of Newport's request, that we would be able to review, or the public would be able to review, the scoring of the applicants for these, the portions in the yellow area, the FBOs, the flight-based operation units that will be there, and also to reveal the questionnaires. And the questionnaires were a series of questions that we, as a city, submitted to the board to make sure that we got answers to the questions that are really important to the city of Newport Beach. So this process has been, I wouldn't say a struggle, but it's been a determined effort all the way through that the city of Newport Beach has represented for its residents what is important to ensure the quality of life of our residents in Newport Beach related to general aviation, because, let me just clarify for people at home who may not understand, general aviation flights, and they do take off today, and they will continue to take off 24/7, they are not regulated under the settlement agreement as commercial aircraft are. So general aviation, and you see private jets as well as small piston planes flying at any time they can. This does not change that, or what this proposal will ultimately be decided by the board of supervisors, but wherever we could, we, in this facility, we've limited, proposed, requested that the hours of operation be limited, and it's just really a passport control operation that will have limited hours. But I just want to be sure that Supervisor Steele gets her due recognition as well. And the entire board, I think, voted unanimously to support the direction. So what's important about the language tonight in this resolution and the amended language we're doing is to be sure in the process, the next step goes to the board of supervisors, and they will then agree or determine, they'll vote on the flight-based operation firms. There'll be two, two large and two small. Within the lease agreement that will follow, when the board of supervisors negotiates the lease with the respective companies, we want to be sure and that there is clear understanding in this lease agreement that this green area is dedicated to the small plane hangars, and so it cannot be used for any other purpose. So that is why we are being so specific and laborious in our effort here, that there is no misunderstanding. We want that green area to remain for small planes. So just want that for the record. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hurdman, for leading this all the way through and carrying it forward. Thank you.
Totally a quality of life issue for the people in our city.
Okay. Ms. Brenner.
I feel like I'm not as informed about this as I would like to be, but I also feel like I sort of represent the confusion of the community. So in asking my questions, I hope that I'm also clarifying for them exactly what this means. So it's my understanding that the plan that was presented by the airport management did not address the guarantee of the same ratio on the other side of the runway that it did on this side of the runway that we were comfortable with. But you, through your meeting last night and your addendum today, are addressing those concerns and presenting to the board of supervisors the recommendation that they incorporate the same ratio on the other side of the runway that they have seemed to agree to on the first side, on this side of the runway. So the board of supervisors doesn't necessarily have to accept that, but because of the collegial working relationship that you've established with them, you feel as confident as possible that by our recommending this tonight, that the board of supervisors would be agreeable to that. But that's the hope.
Well, even more importantly, Diane and Michelle Steele reached an agreement, okay, that we're trying to codify with this addendum. All right? Right, Diane?
Well, yes. But to your point, we can't guarantee what the board of supervisors, but the force, the power, the strength of the people of Newport Beach want this agreement. And this is really what's been influential and has provided, reinforced our presentations to the board of supervisors. The residents want what we've just proposed. So that, they want it in writing, they want it in a lease agreement, and so this is, we'll be proposing to the board of supervisors to support, I mean, they're an elective body, and so we hope we give them compelling reasons to support Supervisor Steele and the rest of supervisors. I don't know how they'll vote, but we want to influence that decision.
Any further questions, Ms. Brenner? Just wanted to make sure. Okay. All right. Seeing no further discussion, we'll go out to public comment on this item in the community room first.
Good evening. My name is Sue Dvorak. I want to thank Diane Dixon and Jeff Hurdman on the aviation committee for the efforts that you've put forth, especially where the GAF is concerned. I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but I just want clarification on the GAF. Are we asking that the GAF be eliminated from the plan?
Go ahead and ask whatever you'd like, and then we'll come back and answer them after public comments.
Okay. I'd like to suggest that the city delay this process for the following reasons. No one has been able to review the full FBO proposals because they haven't been released by the county, so we don't have any idea what's actually included in those proposals. How can you make an educated recommendation when you don't have all of the information you need to review? When this issue was raised at last night's aviation committee meeting, the answer was that the subcommittee's analysis was based on what the supervisors decided to release, which consists of the questionnaire, the conceptual parcel layout, and the FBO ratings. My question is, did the city do anything to try to compel the supervisors to release more information so a proper analysis could be performed? Did the city consult with their aviation attorneys, who are under contract with the city, and ask them to perform a review of this project during the subcommittee's analysis? The second reason you should delay this is because the public was not aware that the FBO proposals had been sent back to the FBOs for modification, and so we were not given the opportunity for public input on this. The supervisors made clear this would be a transparent process, but it has not been a transparent process. And most importantly, I'll allude again to the green-yellow plan that Steele came up with, and I again urge the city to consult with their aviation attorney on this issue to examine its legal implications. It's important to ask the supervisors to define a way to immediately codify their commitment for the green-yellow space allocation through some legal or contractual framework that will protect the original commitment and ensure its survival to the conclusion of the lease terms, regardless of the changes in political leadership and airport or county administration going forward. We would like the city of Newport Beach to demand that the county provide this guaranteed framework before beginning negotiations and winning, with winning bids. And two, to request a delay in both the airport commissioners' meeting and supervisors' meetings of August 5th and August 11th, respectively, until this framework has been defined, publicly posted, and approved. Indeed, it is imperative that all, that any and all terms the city is requesting be thoroughly spelled out in these 35-year lease agreements. After this happens, we can't turn back, and I hope that we're taking every precaution that we can legally to pursue what goals we really want. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other speakers in the community room? All right, do we have a call in? Okay. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Scott Fortin. I'm a light aircraft owner and flight instructor at John Wayne Airport. I'd like to voice my support for ACI Jet for the east side of the airport. ACI Jet has a culture of being very supportive of light aircraft. In an industry where not many FBOs are GA-friendly, they have, you know, been very supportive and really exceptional. Specifically, you know, a lot of FBOs historically don't sell avgas to the light aircraft, and ACI not only sells avgas, it has since the beginning, they do so at very attractive prices, and they really, since they came here to John Wayne, they have really kind of reinvigorated the light side of the general aviation market. So I just want to reiterate that they've been doing that since the beginning of when they started business years ago, and that's nothing new. So I think that says a lot about their intent going forward. So I just wanted to, again, state my support for ACI Jet.
Thank you very much. We'll go to the next speaker, please. Hi, you'll need to mute what you're listening to first, and then give us a call, and then go ahead and speak.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
My name is Keith Boar. Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and city council members. I'm here to thank you for your diligence on this matter. I'm a longtime coastal resident and aviation enthusiast. enthusiast. I've had the opportunity to fly in and out of SNA, FBO, previously operated by Signature, where ACI Jet took over a little over three years ago. And I think ACI deserves kudos for the remodel, amazing remodel job they did, and the, from top to bottom improvement in customer service. But I hope that you would consider recommending them to the Board of Supervisors to be one of the FBO operators selected. Thank you for your public service. Have a great day.
Thank you. We'll go to the next speaker, please. Hi, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and fellow council members. Steve Rosansky, President and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. It's our understanding that ACI Jet is applied to be one of the successful bidders on the proposed long-term lease for an FBO at John Wayne Airport. On behalf of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, I would like to express our full-hearted support for their proposal. A properly functioning airport in close proximity to the city is one of the key ingredients to the success of the quality of life here in Newport Beach, not only for the businesses, but for the residents as well. Properly maintained facilities and a wide variety of services create vibrancy in the surrounding area. ACI Jet has become a welcomed addition to the City of Newport Beach and the Newport Beach business community through both their words and their deeds. From their arrival here in Newport Beach, they have jumped in with both feet. Early on, they joined the Chamber of Commerce, and currently, they are Platinum Level Leadership Circle members, the highest level we have to offer. ACI Jet has also supported several activities here at the Chamber through their sponsorship, including our 2020 economic forecast, which provided valuable information for Newport Beach businesses, and the Chamber's Fire and Life Pride Appreciation Dinner, which honored the first responders in our community. Most recently, they hosted our Navigate Young Professionals group at the airport, allowing our members a behind-the-scenes look at just what an FBO is and does. It was one of the best-attended navigate events in the history of our group. The executives at ACI Jet have also made themselves available as speakers at our Wake Up Newport Breakfast, as well as other Chamber events, thereby keeping our members and the Newport Beach residents informed and up-to-date on recent developments at the airport, including the FBO RFP process, as well as some of the new flight procedures being instituted by the FAA over the last couple of years. I know that they have also given multiple presentations to other local resident groups and organizations. On behalf of the Chamber, I urge you to give ACI Jet's proposal your most favorable consideration, and I urge you to accept the recommendation of the Aviation Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker, please. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Mel Beal. I'm with Airport Working Group. Thank you, and thank you in particular to Councilwoman Dixon and Councilman Jeff Hurdman for your work. Couple of comments, and I'm very supportive of the approach you're taking. I do agree with that from a framework standpoint. However, my biggest concern is this is going from a community emotional issue now into a contractual legal framework. And that's where we have to be very careful to get language that's binding and constrains to the objectives that we have laid out. To give a little history of the timeline is why I'm concerned. If you go back to the original project program, it was back in June 20th that Michelle Steele, Supervisor Steele, wrote her note, and then became part of the June 25th resolution from the Board of Supervisors that mandated the green-yellow breakout, which then instructed the staff, airport staff, to come back with the RFP language to fit that, which on September 10th, it was approved by the Board of Supervisors along with the EIR, and everything went out. When the responses came back in December, I guess the evaluators recognized they were in conflict with EIR 627, that the yellow-green breakout language that was put into the RFPs appeared to conflict with what was then approved as EIR. So, we had two different documents that were in conflict. You had responses to the RFP, which had to be negotiated, you had an EIR, which set the parameters for that document. So, to change that, they issued the amendment to the, excuse me, to the RFP in April 17th, I believe, with the new responses coming back with a different breakout on capacity for, in more alignment with the 617 document. It breaks down, kind of washes out, the document that was added as the terms on September 10th under Michelle Steele's approach. So, putting it back means we've got to get it in a binding language concept. That's what Sue Dvorak was talking about, that's what I'm talking about. How do you get that done? I'm not an attorney in that regard, but I think it needs to be done before the negotiations start. Negotiations will be done in secret by the county, and it'll be presented for approval at some future date with very few days' notice to approve the leases. So, I'm asking you to make sure your language is strong, make sure the Supervisors take that into account, and give us binding language. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next caller. Hi, go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Alan Herman. Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and council members. I'm grateful, so grateful, for the opportunity to be heard tonight about something that I'm extremely passionate about. I love your passion for the community as well. General Aviation and specifically the support of ACI Jet, they're just amazing. My name's Alan Herman. I'm a business owner, a resident of Orange County. Went to Dana Hills, if there's any Dolphins out there, married my high school sweetheart, went to Pepperdine, I have two kids, eight and 10, two dogs. You can tell, I love Southern California, I love Orange County. I do own a small airplane. I don't own a jet, I don't own a turboprop. I own a piston-powered airplane, very similar to the one of Bill Borgsmiller, the owner of ACI. I'm here, if you can't tell, to support ACI. Here are the reasons. Hundred percent general aviation focus, bottom line. Been there for 21 years, he's got a vested interest, it's in their blood. ACI checks all the boxes. The schedule that was shown earlier, they check all the boxes to meet the city's goals for general aviation improvement, supportive of piston-powered airplanes, and supplying avgas and competitive pricing. Amazing team. Go meet them. Amazing, absolutely amazing, consistent year after year, literally the same team, supportive of general aviation, small guys. We're talking small airplanes. Have been from the beginning, and they've been a breath of fresh air at John Wayne for the last, I think it's been three years. I mentioned their team being respectful, supportive of operating conjunction with the other airport operations, i.e. closed at night. They are currently closed at night, plan to be closed at night, and as a small airplane, we have extremely strict noise restrictions. We can't just fly anytime of the day like we want to normally fly. It's very strict when you get into the service, and they respect that, and they enforce it, and they want that to continue as well. They love aviation. You can feel it when you talk to the line guys. Come get some avgas with me, and I think you guys will, you'll feel that, too. Closing, I've been flying for 14 years. I've never been to a flight-based operator that has even come close to the service levels of ACI Jet. Every single person employed by them is just top-notch. Remember, I own a small piston-powered airplane, not a Gulfstream. My experience with them has been exceptional. I appreciate you guys, each and every one of you. I know this time's crazy. Your service is absolutely amazing. For me, for the rest of the community, thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Charles Klob. Quite the cheerleading squad for ACI. I think it's worth noting that the activist groups that have been writing and calling in have not picked a side versus, an operator versus an operator. They're taking issue with the process. A great deal of effort went in last year to convince the Supervisors to not choose the program that the airport management was proposing. Yet, the EIR was adopted at the same time. So, the agreement that we're all talking about, that Michelle championed, was what was sent out for the RFI, or the bids, and what came back was not matching the EIR. So, in April, as Mel correctly mentioned, his dates are all correct, the addendum was sent out, and they were asked to rebid. So, what has been received as bids matches what the airport management wanted, and the ask on the part of the activists is that you not lose the fact that it can be awarded to these fine operators, whomever they may be, and they can build what airport management wanted in the first place. Do not have to build that. So, we're asking your resolution, your letter, your whatever you choose can be as strong as possible to get back what was negotiated by the Supervisors. And our belief is that the Supervisors probably don't know that the EIR was required to be followed. So, please, whatever you do tonight, cause some documents, some action to occur to let them know that what has been bid and what can be awarded on the 11th of August is what the airport staff wanted and not what was negotiated with the cities and the various stakeholders that attended all those meetings. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any more to, all right. Okay, next caller. Hi, go ahead.
Hello. I'll cut it off. I just want to hear the last person.
Okay, counting in your time. She wants to listen to the prior speaker first, and then go. We're on a slight delay. When you're ready, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Julie Johnson, and I'm with Airfare. And, a little bit of an echo, but I wanted to let you know that the Aviation Committee didn't catch the glitch net last night, and the several people that were concerned about it are the ones that are the community, airport community members such as SPON, Camp, AWG, and they were very concerned last night why we're passing something through that isn't conceived or defined yet, and that's very concerning, but they're voting something that they don't even know what they're voting on. And these are newer people that aren't as experienced with what we've been going through all these years, and it just seems like it got pushed through without any kind of real assessment. I would also like to say that the alignment, and I think Tara's PowerPoint said that the GAF was, they wanted limited hours, but as I recall, before, there was no GAF, and that was one of the city goals, so that might have been changed. But the community members, they do not want the GAF. We don't want international coming in, that was really strong, and we also want, like to see the language that is being proposed as right now. Aaron Harp did a great job putting something together, we think, and we appreciate that, but no one from the Aviation Committee or the community has seen what we're pushing through until just now, and no legal assessment of it. Lastly, you know, ACI just had a thought, because they've been pitching everyone and the Chamber and everybody in sight, as have the other FBOs, and when we met with them, we realized that there were partials that were left wide open, and that was concerning for us, and that's why we came about the glitch. So, they said very kindly, they would be happy to take out the GAF. That wasn't something they were after, and they also agreed to put some kind of language into their lease that would protect the Southern California pilots, California pilots. So, I think maybe this is the way to go. Let's get the FBOs on board. They are saying right now, before they're granted, that they're willing to communicate with the, cooperate with the communities and put something into their lease. So, what do we, what do we think about working together to try and make that happen? This is a 35-year lease, this is such an important issue for the community, and as you said, there are planes flying over our heads every night, so let's not make a mistake, let's get things done properly. Thank you for your effort, city council member Dixon and Hurdman. Thank you.
Thank you. Next call. Hi, go ahead.
Yes, William Borgsmiller.
Yes, go ahead.
My name is William Borgsmiller. I'm the founder and CEO of ACI Jet. Thank you for the time to address everyone this evening. I just wanted to echo the last person's comments a little bit, in that if we were given the opportunity to be a successful proposer at the airport, we are fully willing to honor the spirit of Michelle Steele's proposal with the green and yellow space. As a light aircraft pilot myself, I have a vested interest in the green space as well as the yellow space in looking at the future of this airport. So, I hope everybody appreciates the degree to which we have really tried to listen to the city of Newport Beach and other concerned residents, as our company's background is growing up, we are in a small California noise-sensitive coastal community in San Luis Obispo. We're not from the big city, we're a small-town company, and we really do understand the concerns that a lot of the residents have brought forth, and it's not something that we consider just because there's a public process going on, but it's really just in the DNA of who we are and what we do. So, I appreciate everybody's time this evening, and I would just add one final thing, in that we were the only proposer to actually offer to shut down hard at night to try to provide a deterrent to activity over Newport Beach. So, thank you very much for everybody's time this evening, and I appreciate your consideration of the recommendation.
All right, thank you. Any other calls? Okay. All right, we're bringing back up here. There were a couple of questions. One was whether we were going to be trying to push for GAF elimination. Actually, would you mind pulling up the slides again? And, it's okay, once you do that, I'll ask to go to a... All right, let's move forward. Next, next, next. There you go. All right, so, let's just clarify for a second what the revised recommendation language would be that Ms. Dixon and Mr. Hurdman were referencing. So, the first is, you can see where it says number one, and at the end of number one, it says, "As Attachment A," I would, the addition would be, comma, "with the green area built out in a manner that preserves the current ratio of 40, 50, and 60-foot hangars." And then, under two, where it says, "eliminates the ability of any lessee to construct and operate a general aviation facility," or, this is the additional language, "or, comma, at a minimum, comma, restricts the hours of the GAF to 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., comma, and then the remaining, the city council approves, et cetera." So, to that, to the question about the GAF discussion, that would be the proposed additional language. And then, there were questions about trying to convince the Board of Supervisors to delay, and, you know, whether the Board of Supervisors would provide more information than had already been provided in a review by our attorneys. Maybe, Mr. Harp, could you speak to the information Board of Supervisors was providing, and then a review of our outside counsel?
So, we initially had discussed with legal counsel for the county whether or not they would disclose all the information, and they would not disclose that information because they believed it was trade secrets. We tried to include language in the RFP that would allow for the disclosure of all that information. They actually put in a confidentiality provision, which prohibited them from disclosing it. They deemed that information to be trade secrets, and they refused to disclose it.
Okay. And I was kind of surprised to hear one of the callers say that this is being pushed through without any real assessment. I mean, I'm not even on this, and I've seen the amount of work being done by Mr. Hurdman, Ms. Dixon, and Mr. Muldoon, and then the Aviation Committee itself. I, I, I mean, I'd almost call myself an outside observer on all of this, to the extent that a council member could be considered that, and I still have seen how much work has gone through on this. I just, I, I'm a little surprised to see, to hear, hear a comment like that. Anyway, I'll go to Ms. Dixon first.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, could you just clarify on one of the question, public comment questions about the review of the EIR and the supplemental EIR, please? Thank you.
So, what's been approved at this point is the environmental impact report. If they wanted to expand beyond what's been analyzed, they'd have to do additional environmental analysis. That analysis has not been done, so they couldn't have more belt at the airport than has already been considered in that environmental document. than has already been considered in that environmental document.
Just a follow up question, as I understood it as well, that EIR was, after Michelle Supervisor Steele created her green and yellow map, that is, I understood, that was the parameters of that space was what was defined within the EIR, is that correct?
Well, that's right. You can always do less than what's been analyzed in an environmental impact report, you just can't do more. So we don't think there's any bar or restriction from them complying with Supervisor Steele's direction. And we'll be pushing for that to be included in the final lease agreement that will come back to the board after they've selected someone to negotiate with and work through those terms. But we're going to be very vigilant on this and we'll make sure to try to get those provisions included.
Mr. Hurdman.
Yeah, I'd just like to make one comment about, the comment that was made about this process not being as transparent as a process as the community would like to have, have seen. That certainly is not a result of the city of Newport Beach. We fought that battle time and time again at Board of Supervisor meetings. And I don't like to use the word blame, but if the community is not happy about the transparency of this process, that needs to be aimed at the Board of Supervisors and not the city of Newport Beach, the city council, or the Aviation Committee.
Okay, we have no further discussion up here. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And I just, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the motion, if you don't mind. So the motion is for, as I would understand it, it's to move staff recommendation with the language amended, as I read.
As you read it, yes.
Agreed, Ms. Dixon. All right, any further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carried unanimously, seven zero.
All right, thank you. So we're going to move on to the next item. Item number 18, which is a COVID update. I'll turn this over to Ms. Leong.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. We actually have a very short report this time around. We'll be briefly having Chief Boils come up and talk about the statistics and the data that's going on right now. And then we'll also have Simone Jurges come up and talk about the Emergency and Temporary Use Permit Program. And Deputy City Manager Tara Finnegan will talk briefly on our grant program that's going on. So I'll have Chief Boils kick it off.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Jeff Boils, your Fire Chief. Quick COVID update here in Newport Beach. Newport Beach has currently, as of this afternoon, 793 positive COVID cases. Of those, we've experienced six deaths here in the city of Newport Beach as the first death was reported on March 25th. Over at Hoag Hospital, Hoag, I received a report from them this afternoon. They're reporting that their COVID admits into their hospital has been slightly down from this week to last week. And their emergency room admits from COVID positive patients as well as slightly down from last week. They do have their surge capacity up and ready and still ready to go if needed. And one interesting note that Hoag pointed out was that they didn't experience the noticeable surge that they expected or spike in patients from the 4th of July activities, at least from their perspective. And that's from the notes that I was sent over from their emergency room. Over in Orange County, the number of hospitalized COVID patients is down 13.8% over the last 14 days. The number of ICU admits has decreased 15.5% over the last 14 days as well. 40% of the IC beds remain available. 58% of ventilators remain available. I think that's kind of interesting because we are seeing a spike in the numbers, but the hospitalizations, the ICUs and the ventilators are either stable or decreasing. So I think that goes back to what I reported a couple of weeks ago where the, the largest spike in numbers is in the area of the 24, 34, 44 year old population. Here in, with our fire department in Newport, we've responded to 494 of what we call our enhanced precaution calls. We've transported 39 known positive patients in the back of our ambulance to Hoag Hospital, 17 of which were just in the month of July. So we did see a little spike in those. It's been widely publicized that we had some firefighters test positive along with some lifeguards. We had 10 total firefighters and 13 lifeguards as of today. We quarantined 39 firefighters over the course of the month of July. So they've been segueing, some have come off the job and gone back on the job while others come off. And as of this morning, 36 of the 39 are back on full duty. We have three more that are just waiting clearance from the facility that we're using. Another interesting note is 85 of the assisted living and skilled nursing facilities have experienced some sort of outbreak amongst the county or around the county. And that was only 36 as of June. So again, there's a doubling there. Just in the month of July, it seemed like we had quite a flare up in numbers. I stand ready for any questions.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, I'd just like to go over this for those at home. Some people don't watch these every time. So the number's 793. It's cumulative number since the pandemic first started.
Correct.
So super majority of those have recovered.
Correct.
And when you give numbers on the city as well, there's no staffing issues. It's a cumulative number and it's, you're sort of like rolling into quarantine, self-quarantine, and hopefully recovery, and then rolling back into the job when the time has passed.
Correct.
So do we have any staffing concerns?
No, and I'm glad you brought that up. I didn't have it in my notes to, to report. But we have not shut down any lifeguard towers. We're still staffing our bridges that we spoke about earlier. And all the fire stations and apparatus have remained open. So it was just an issue of, like I said, quarantining some at some points. And as they come back onto the job, others have been quarantined and everything has remained open.
Now, you gave some Orange County numbers that are pretty compelling. 13.8% admits down, 15.5% ICUs down. Those, that's, those are Orange County hospital wide, correct?
Correct.
The spikes that we do see, are they mostly in Curran and Santa Ana, Anaheim, and was it Costa Mesa, does that sound right?
As far as the number spikes, I don't have those in front of me. I just have the hospital and the ICUs.
Well, I'll just tell you that from what I've read, the place is likely where there are peaks. It's obviously not Hoag based on what we said, but so are neighboring cities and Anaheim, Santa Ana, I believe Costa Mesa. And that's sort of the way this works. It's, it's going to go through communities in different fashion based on just the way, I guess, pandemic spread. Never thought I would learn so much about this stuff. But the, you said that Hoag has full surge capacity if needed. Are there any concerns that Hoag at this time about capacity?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
I don't know if Steve Rosansky is coming tonight, but I understood that the Newport Chamber had some signs that they were passing out that were encouraging people to wear masks in order to support local businesses because they really want us to continue these trends of going downwards. And I, I'm finding this hopefully optimistic, just this report this evening. So I think that's good to hear. And then how's the junior lifeguard program going?
The junior lifeguard program is within about two weeks, believe it or not, already of wrapping up. So the program's gone on so far with, with a robust population of kids, over 1,200 of them, and we've done really well.
Cool, awesome. Yeah, one, one quick thing, it's probably worth reminding people when they're looking at the Orange County numbers when they're released out. The, they don't, it doesn't mean that everyone tested positive that one day when they're reporting it out. You take a look into the deeper, they'll actually show you the bar graphs. And then, you know, it seems like the skilled nursing facilities were kind of taking a turn positively where the number of people who are being reported out as having died related to COVID is, is less coming out of the skilled nursing facilities. Can you talk just a little bit to how Newport Beach is working with our skilled nursing facilities, you know, and have been from the start of this pandemic?
Sure, our EMS Division Chief, Kristin Thompson, deployed early on in March or April to the vast majority of our skilled nursing facilities. And not all the cities have a position that she holds. Several of them do. But we're fortunate in that she took that on as a, as an early project of hers, a passion of hers, to go work with the staff and tie them in with our paramedics and with anybody from the county or from Hoag or any resources that they could get from PPE or from training. Some of it, we found that was just a, a lack of some of the awareness, if you will, early on. And staff would pass it from each other and also to the patients. So I think we've greatly reduced or minimized that here in Newport.
Awesome, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. One other Hoag comment we learned when the mayor and I did the video last week is that, just as the Fire Chief just reported, that the demographic that is largely impacted is the 17 to 40, 42 or 44. And number one, and number two, there stays, if they, if they are hospitalized, if their stays in the hospital are much shorter, in a matter of days. And part of that also is attributed, what Hoag is saying, is the drug remdesivir, I'm not pronouncing it correctly, but they are using that, and that is helping on all age groups. So a lot has happened since the end of January, February, March, when they first started identifying. So, and then we hear in the news that the vaccine may be, certainly maybe any, any time this fall and winter before the first of the year. So I think we know that a lot of good things could be happening. And then we've got the school situation. But just to follow up with Councilmember Brenner, I think it really is easy for people to wear a mask and socially distance and wash your hands. This is what Hoag said. We all sat there with our double masks on. And I think that really can make a difference in our community. I know our residents feel that way. We've got visitors that come, and I think it makes, it makes a big difference. And it just gives people confidence that the community's working together. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Avery.
Chief, there are a good number of the small, six patient care homes throughout neighborhoods in the city. Do you have any statistics on cases in those homes related to larger homes and hospitals?
I don't, I do not.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Anything else?
No, to Ms. Dixon's point, admittedly so. We had a, it ran through our fire stations pretty quick. We had to get control of it. We clamped it down. We quarantined, we did contact tracing, and I think we have a solid handle. Like I said, 36 of the 39 are back on duty. We, we did make adjustments to the way they conduct themselves inside the stations and and around with each other. So we're fully staffed and I hope to completely eliminate it from within.
Thank you, awesome. All right, and then Mr. Jurges.
Thank you, good evening. Again, let me just jump to, we're going to just get a quick slide here. So talk about the Back to Business Program. Again, this is, the city council adopted an emergency ordinance that allowed a lot of the businesses to be able to expand to the outdoors because of the governor's order to kind of shut all the interior uses down. So we've have-
Sorry, just about one second. Although it looks like the transaction, I'm going to recuse myself just to be safe based on the transaction I was looking into a couple of weeks ago that probably won't happen, but just to be safe. I'm going to, because it was rejected, I'm going to recuse myself, thank you.
Okay, just a second then. All right, go ahead.
So with our program, but the Back to Business Program, we, the staff has been granting emergency temporary use permits. And then we have a table up there, and you can see that first line of restaurants. So we've issued 69 permits to restaurants to expand to the outdoors. We still have another eight that we're processing currently. And we've started to see hair, nail, massage users submit their applications. And we have three pending now. We've also had recurring amendments for some restaurants. They have to make some changes or the hours of operation changes. So you could see, we've done a lot of work there. And on the right hand side, I listed all the departments that are working on this program. As everything COVID related, this is a lot of work. And we dedicated a lot of staff resources and it affects at least five departments there. You know, multiple staff from each department. So they're putting in a lot of effort to try to get these permits turned around rapidly and quickly. And I'm on the phone constantly with different restaurants and different operators. Once they, once they expand, they always want to make changes just because things are changing for them. And you know, these restaurants are barely surviving too. So they, they need a lot of help, a lot of assistance. So a lot of, a lot of applications have been processed and permitted.
All right, Ms. Brenner and then Mr. Avery.
Simone, I've been asked by several people and business owners whether the council and the staff would consider continuing these outdoor expansions after the emergency is over. Are you looking at that?
Not at this time. We don't have a time from yet when the emergency is over. The ordinance that allows this program to move forward, there's only a 14 day buffer. Once the, once the emergency order expires, this ordinance gets sunsetted and restaurants have 14 days to clear everything and bring them back indoors. So that's something that we have to anticipate and bring back an item for council's consideration if they want to continue the program or sunset the program or whatever the council would like. But we're not looking at it really right now.
Okay.
Yeah, we might, we might be in this for a while. I've heard the same questions and I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see it, actually. I think the outdoor dining has been much appreciated. Mr. Avery.
Where are you now? So you're meeting demand on this? You feel like you're getting back to people in a pretty quick, pretty quick way?
I think so. As I said, we put a lot of resources to this. We have 12, we have about 11 pending right now. You know, we've, we started off at a 24 hour turnaround, then we down to a 48 hour, now we're at a 72 hour turnaround. So we're putting a lot of effort. I don't, I don't think we need to do more on the staff side. I think we just need to dedicate just the time. And these are time consuming, believe it or not. But I think we're in good shape.
And do sometimes people's requests don't happen because of just the layout and the amount of room and public space around their restaurants?
Yeah, it's really, it goes back to the business owner. Sometimes they just, they just look at it, it's cheaper sometimes just to shut down and pause and wait it out. Not everybody steps forward and says, this is a great solution. So those are the foreholds, those are applicant driven. They want to go on the holding pattern.
Well, I think this is a real, one of the, I think, many success stories in Newport is your work and the work of your department responding so quickly to help business. And it's just, I think you've saved a lot of folks very, you know, from stressful times and they can operate and get income going and bring their employees back. It's just really a great effort. And I've heard that from, from numerous folks in restaurants that I've, I've gone to. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had a restaurant owner contact me about outside dining. I guess it was a week and a half ago or something. And I told him, I said, you gotta go get a permit. He, oh, permit, oh. He was just devastated. I don't have time for a permit. And I said, I insisted, I said, you call over there at our planning department and they're going to help you. Don't be afraid of it, just do it. And he called his neighboring restaurant fellow and got support it as well. And he called me back two hours later after he'd spoken to someone in planning. And he just could not stop complimenting how much helpful they were and how fast they got him through it, through the process. So I just have to say, man, you guys are awesome.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I'll echo all the compliments. Turnaround on this has been great. I do have a question. Do we have any way of tracking, you know, which businesses so far in our city have actually just straight shut down? I mean, I imagine that there have to be restaurants that have just said, you know what, we've tried, can't do it, and they're gone. Do we have a way of tracking that?
I think the only way to track it is just from a visual. And maybe we reach out to the chamber to see if what kind of data they have. But we don't have anything currently that we're tracking.
All right. Yeah, Tara, I know Tara's next. Tara, we might want to try to figure that one out. Because I, I mean, I was, there's a, there's a, I can't figure out if Babette's, for example, in Crystal Cove is closed. But I jumped on their website recently because I was planning on trying to get down there for brunch or something. It looks like they're just shut. So I'm trying to figure that one out. But I'm kind of curious how many have just said, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to survive through this one. So anyway, I- So anyway, this is, but this is, I mean, this is just helping so many businesses survive. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Simone.
Thank you.
Tara, you're up.
SBDC is continuing to work with our grantees one-on-one. In addition to getting their documentation together, they offer a host of free services to small businesses. So in this really difficult time, they have another helping hand in SBDC. And I know SBDC is helping our city, and I think they have thirteen other programs right now. So we are really appreciative that our program is in their queue, and they are working with us. We have also begun to issue grant checks to our grantees. We had some checks go out last week. We've got a bunch more we've approved for this week. So it is going forward, and we'll be getting that money out to the businesses that need it so much.
Awesome. Any questions? Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Tara. You've been managing that, and aviation, you've been busy. So thank you so much. Can you give us just shed some light, how many grants are going to be, have been approved and will be awarded, and what's the average grant size?
I wish I had all of that at my fingertips. I know that we had three hundred in some grants approved. Some of those candidates have fallen out of the process, either by their choice or some of their documents haven't been turned in yet or didn't quite match some things we were checking. But we believe we will have at least three hundred and, let's say, five ultimate candidates, ultimate grantees. And that might even be, we go to our waiting list and backfill those that have dropped out the process. So far, we've issued, like, I think we went, nine checks last week went out, and we've got at least thirty-some more approved this week that are in the queue already. And I got another email tonight saying, please go in and check all of, probably another ten to twelve more. And that's what keeps happening now. As the grantees turn in their documents to SBDC, then they forward it on to us to do a final check, and we can cut the payment, so.
And then there were about nine hundred applications?
Nine hundred, and we have about, we have funding for about three hundred, three hundred and five grants, we believe. And they range from five thousand to ten thousand. A lot of them are five thousand.
Very good. May I ask, Mr. Jurges, what about the, thank you, Tara, on the Community Block Grant Program? Has that started yet?
So my understanding is we're getting the paperwork ready. We think we'll be able to launch it this week, end of week, beginning of next week. It'll be marketed, pushed out, and advertised through a lot of the social media and everything.
We'll go through the same SBDC?
That's correct, but there'll be another layer with administrator. It's restricted funding, so it won't be as simple.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Great. All right, Grace? Okay, I got one other thing for you real quick. I asked Tim Heatherton, because keep in mind, our library closed, and a lot of people were wondering, hey, how can we get our books on hold? And they were one of the first in the county to figure out how to do that. And I asked him, how many, how many of you, how many books have you kicked out, and, you know, items? He gave me this. Between April first and June thirtieth, people have picked up one hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-six items through curbside service. Curbside! That is, that's incredible. And then everyone, I think at this point, has figured out you can do some pretty cool stuff online through the Newport Beach Public Library. So far, Newport, or in that same time period, Newport Beach Public Library patrons have downloaded sixty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-six eBooks and magazines. And just this week, they launched a new app. The Newport Beach Public Library launched a new app. So if you've got the old app, delete it, put the new one on your phone, and it's even better. So it's a plug for our library. I got to tell you, a hundred and thirty-five thousand items. My household has done a good job on adding to that number, which I like to see. Anyway, we'll go out to public comment on this one. We'll start in the community room first.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. This again is Jim Mosher. I have three comments. First, as impressive as the one hundred and thirty-five thousand items checked out by the library through curbside service is, and it is impressive, it should be understood that that is just a small fraction of the number of items that would be checked out in the same time period when those libraries are physically open. The second comment I wanted to make is that the presentation about the Back to Business Emergency Ordinance allowing expansion of businesses onto sidewalks and parking lots may have given the impression that that was exclusively, has to do with restaurants and possibly hair salons. And I would like to point out, as I'm sure you realize, the ordinance that you passed actually makes that program available to any commercial or religious business. And then the final comment I have is that one of the obvious impacts of the pandemic has been to the format of public meetings, including this one. People in Newport Beach, I think, are grateful that you provide the opportunity for some people to come here in person. That opportunity is not well advertised, but for the council meetings, it is, for the other public meetings in Newport Beach. The opportunity is appreciated, but people have to make a decision based on their own health concerns, whether they want to come in person or stay home and try to follow things online. I come in person in part because I feel more comfortable speaking to you this way, but also because this is the only way I can be sure I'm accessing all the materials that you are seeing, which are available, as they used to be, in the foyer to the entryway to the council chamber, oddly not in the room where the public is. And I wanted to point out on the previous agenda item about the general aviation, in the lobby, I found, which was mentioned in the staff report, a supplemental staff report that actually gave the language that you were considering and amending tonight. And I would like to point out, as best I can tell, that was not posted online, so that people trying to follow your proceedings at home did not have access to that, could not review that and advance the meeting. I realize everybody is trying to do the best they can. I think it's really important that all the materials, including the last-minute emails, which is one of the main things I see when I come here in person, all of those be posted so that the public can see the same material that you are seeing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else in the community room? All right, do we have any calls? All right. All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and councilmembers. This is Steve Rozansky, President and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank Councilwoman Joy Brenner for mentioning our Wear a Mask program. We have launched a program, offering signs to business owners throughout town, not just chamber members, but any business owner who wants one. The signs come with various messages. They say, save our economy, wear a mask, or save our business, wear a mask, save a life, wear a mask. We had actually one business call in, and she wanted us to print up a custom sign, which we're willing to do as well. And hers said, save my grandma, wear a mask. So I think it's having a definite impact on the community. As I said, we're happy to distribute them to whoever wants them, including residents. Actually, we've given out a few resident signs too, if you want to post one in your yard. And we can tailor the message to whatever you want to say, as long as it ends in "wear a mask." And so if they would like to contact us, they can reach us. I'm reachable at steve@newportbeach.com, or you can come in on our regular information line at info@newportbeach.com. And we'll be happy to, you know, get you whatever you need to promote wearing a mask in public. I think it's one of the very few ways that we as individuals can fight coronavirus, and everybody needs to do their part. So, and I compliment you and the other council members who are masked up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other calls? All right, we'll bring it back. All right, appreciate it, staff. All right, last, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with a prevailing side.
Any motions? All right, it's not listed tonight because I just found out about it, but I'm going to go ahead and adjourn in memory of Lawrence Erwin Klein, aka Poppy, who died peacefully on July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, from COVID-19. He was eighty-six years old. Larry was born in Brooklyn on July twenty-fourth, nineteen thirty-three, and quickly moved to Texas. Larry attended UT Austin, where he graduated in nineteen fifty-five. Soon after, he fell in love with Carla Jean Langert, and they married in nineteen fifty-seven. Working as a physical therapist, Larry developed an interest in medicine. With three toddlers at home, he enrolled at UT Southwestern Medical School and graduated at the top of his class in nineteen sixty-five. As a resident at Parkland Memorial Hospital, he was the first medical professional to take care of President John F. Kennedy when he was shot on November twenty-second, nineteen sixty-three. After medical school, Larry served as a naval officer in Long Beach, California. In nineteen sixty-nine, he moved his family to Newport Beach and welcomed a fourth child. In private practice as an OB-GYN at Hoag Hospital, Larry delivered more than five thousand babies during his forty-year career. He was admired for his intelligence, charm, and easygoing bedside manner. He retired in two thousand and four. Larry passed away peacefully with his daughter Stacy by his side. The family thanks the team at Hoag Hospital for his care, especially Larry's dear friend, Dr. Joe Reggio. Larry is predeceased by his wife in two thousand and twelve. He's survived by his children, Glenna Klein, Stacy Yeney, Scott Klein, and Carrie Bernstein, his son-in-law Ron Bernstein, and his grandchildren, Austin Yeney, Hayden Yeney, Kelby Klein, McKenna Klein, Zachary Bernstein, and Sophie Bernstein. In his memory, please consider donation to Cure JM, an organization searching for a cure to the rare autoimmune disease which has afflicted his youngest grandchild. We adjourn in Larry's memory.